Alright. So at this time, it's been customary to have a invocation. Is there anyone that would like to give an invocation? Not, let's just have a moment of silence. Hey, roll call. Kim, would you call the roll?
Mayor Gatway.
Here.
Alderman Detweiler, Alderman Gettemeyer, Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Whiteman.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Hey, next order of business is election of acting president of the Board of Alderman. But before we get into this, I asked John to give an overview of the duties and responsibilities of exactly what the president of the board does. Go ahead and take it, John.
This way. The acting president of the Board of Alderman is a statutory position. And the position requires that on the vacancy, either permanent or temporary of the mayor from office, the acting president shall serve and perform the duties of the mayor, fill the right privileges and powers of the mayor. And then once that vacancy or temporary absence ceases, the mayor's powers return to him.
You know, that absence, does it have to be permanent, partial, or what? I mean, how does it, how's that defined? I mean, temporarily?
It's, it's either in a vacancy, a disability, or if the mayor is... He's just two or is unable to perform duties.
Alright. Those are any nominations for an Alderman? The, the acting president, since Mike is only until, I guess, the election?
I nominate Keith Whiteman.
Any other nominations?
I nominate myself.
Okay. Any other nominations? We have two nominations. Okay. Got a second for Keith? Oh, I don't need a second.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Don't have another Alderman for Ward Two. Is that okay? I didn't, I'm asking because I don't know.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, John. It's...
It is. Okay.
Okay, so we have a nomination for Keith. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we got three. Nomination for, I guess, that's it. I mean, that's the majority, so Keith, acting president of... Consent agenda. Prove the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. And a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none. The consent agenda is approved. All the comments. Kim?
I'm gonna stand here. Hi, Gina Leach, 2027, St. Madeline Drive. I'm a resident for 10 years now in Darton Prairie. And I know this was discussed at the last meeting. I wasn't aware of the protocol and didn't, wasn't able to speak. But in regards to Barrett Haven Park again, I just want to reiterate that our community loves this piece of land and we would hate to see it gone. Every, there's multiple subdivisions that use it, not just Barrett Haven. It's a safe place for our residents and visitors and kids to use. Um, they don't have to cross the street to the Bluebird Park. Um, it's an open field. They get to explore. It's just a great space for them and there's residents nearby that can also watch out for visitors and kids that use that space. So my request is to please just politely decline the community college offer and any other offers for that space and keep it solely for our community. Thank you.
Joel Kang, 2200 drive. Uh, main concern here is, I was just looking at the Missouri state laws. And in there, I found that cities could not violate their own city ordinances. They can't do it. Unless I've missed something in there, which I assume Mr. Young can tell us about. With that in mind, I'm wondering how the apartment complex was allowed to have fewer parking spaces than what our city ordinance states they can have. I'm also allowed, how it was allowed, traffic was allowed to go onto Coral Marie, even though our ordinances say they can't. And I'm also wondering why it was allowed to be built in the first place since it doesn't back up against or, but to a highway. These are all city ordinances and if we don't have, if you can just violate them, why in the hell do we even have them? Uh, then when it comes to stump road, how can the city violate the state law when it, when you direct all the water from stump road onto my property? How can that be? Do you guys, is the city, and there's only two people here that can really address this one. That would be Mark Johnson and the mayor. Because you were the two that were on with the stump road and throughout the entire Prairie Encore thing as to how it was. Um, let's see. And I'd also like to know, I've, I've been told several times that the city can't use public funds to improve my property, which it's not improving. It would be fixing, repairing my property from the damage from the water that has already, that was led by the city, that the city allowed to go on there that damaged my property. Where is that in the law that says it can't, you can't use city funds to repair, not improve? And then, I'd like to say I look forward to your responses to this because in the ordinances, this is our ordinances. If a member of the public asks a direct question of a member of the Board of Alderman or the mayor, time will be set aside on the agenda for the mayor or any member of the Board of Alderman to respond to such a question with a brief response. So I look forward to your answers because, you know, we don't want to violate the ordinances. Thank you.
I promise you that Joel and I did not plan these speeches together because he's been sick and that's the last thing I want to, I don't even want to touch the mic. Um, my name is Cheryl Bratton. My husband and I live on Cruden Bay Court in Inverness subdivision. I think most people would agree, snow removal efforts in the entire metro area have been less than, less than ideal since the winter storm hit last weekend. It was a storm, but not one of necessarily catastrophic proportions. Yet considering how much difficulty people in subdivisions had getting plowed out, I do wonder how the city intends to help residents of the future Prairie Encore Apartments after a similar event. I understand the property will be managed by a private company and is private property. But I also know the city approved a parking situation that was set up for failure from the beginning. I'd like the board to ask itself what proactive steps the city will take to ensure residents of the new, of the Encore, most likely new Darton Prairie residents, how they will be insured parking spots, will their parking spots will not be blocked by some, snow that has been, been pushed into an assigned location? Where are they going to park their cars? Look at Target, look at Schnucks, snow gets plowed into parking spaces. Sooner or later, people have to get to work. What responsibility does the city have to Encore residents in particular to make sure they're able to do so? While I was looking at ordinances, I swear we didn't tag team this. While I was looking at ordinances regarding snow removal, I stumbled upon something else I want to share. I've spoken before and provided evidence that Inverness subdivision has been used, has repeatedly been used as an access point for the Encore's construction vehicles. Ordinance 754, section 350, point 330, letter A. It is hereby prohibited for the driver of any semi tractor trailer to drive through, park, or conduct any type of activity in a residential area except for local deliveries. Local delivery shall mean the act of loading or unloading of a semi tractor trailer or part thereof. Once again, I'm asking the board to become familiar with the city's ordinances and make certain that they are enforced. And no, the ordinance is not.
New business. And a motion to read bill 2501 by title only for the first time? Keith first, second by Ryan. Okay, Sarah, I'd like to read bill 2501 by title only, first time.
An ordinance of the city of Darting Prairie, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to negotiate and execute professional services agreement amendment number two with H.R. Green, Inc. for the stump road reconstruction and improvements project number 97167.
Any discussion or debate?
I just, I just want to thank Kathy for doing the hard work that she did to eliminate the cost that we would be paying out by utilizing one of our own employees. I think that was a good movement. That being said, as administration, I would move to read bill 2501 for a second time.
And a motion to read bill 2501 for a second time? A second? Second?
Act.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none? Sarah, would you read bill 2501 for a second time?
An ordinance of the city of Darting Prairie, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to negotiate and execute professional services agreement amendment number two with H.R. Green, Inc. for the stump road reconstruction and improvement, improvements project number 971670.
Any discussion or debate?
Move for a roll call vote?
And a motion for a roll call vote?
Second.
Second for Keith. Uh, Kim, would you call the roll?
Alright. Aye.
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 Okay, add a clear bill 2501 is ordinance two. Two, three, three. By that much. Okay, old business. Bill 24... And a motion to read bill 2460 by title only for a second time?
Moved.
By Keith, second by Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none? Sarah, would you read bill 2460 by title only?
An ordinance of the city of Darting Prairie, Missouri, approving the first amended PUD area plan for a certain development commonly known as the Darting Prairie Apartments.
Hey, any discussion or debate?
Move for a roll call vote?
And a motion for a roll call vote?
Okay.
Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, wait a minute. And would you call the roll?
Aye.
460 is ordinance two, B5. And a motion to read bill 2461 by title only for a second time?
Go move.
Yep. First by Mark, second by Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none. Sarah, would you read bill 2461 by title only?
An ordinance of the city of Darting Prairie, Missouri, approving first amended PUD area plan for a certain development commonly known as the condos at...
Move for a roll call vote?
I have a question. I'm sorry. These are the ones behind Target. Is this correct? Okay, which one of these I'm, I'm confused, man.
The one's next to the ICD.
Next to the ICD.
ICD, okay, thank you. Sorry.
The, the one with the...
Got you.
Yeah. Okay. Motion for a roll call vote? Mark?
A second.
Second by Keith. Kim, would you call the roll?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Add a clear bill 2461 is ordinance two, B36.
Motion to read amended bill 2462.
Read the amendment to bill 2462. Okay, so...
Just for clarification.
To amend the bills, yeah.
Assistant as presented.
Okay. We have a motion to read bill, or to amend bill 2462 assistant as amended, as discussed in the work session. If anybody would like more clarification or read again, we can read it again. If not, take a motion to amend bill.
Correct. Correct.
Second.
Hey, all in favor of amending bill 24... Do we need a roll call? No. Okay, all, all in favor of amending bill 2462?
Why are we saying?
Say aye. I mean...
Take the mic by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You hear none. Bill 2462 is amended?
Motion to read bill 2462.
Hey, a motion to read bill 2462 as amended by title only? Got a second by Keith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none? Sarah, would you read bill 2462 by title only?
An ordinance of the city of Darting Prairie, Missouri, providing for the rezoning of certain real property known as Darting Town Square Resubdivision Plot 12C from C. L. Commercial District 23. Of Commercial District 23, Development PUD and approving an area...
Hey, any discussion or debate? Yes.
Move for a roll call vote?
And a motion for a roll call vote by Mark? Second by Keith? Then would you call the roll?
Aye.
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 Bill 2462 is ordinance two, B37. Hey, entertain a motion to read bill 2463 by title only for the second time?
I'm moved.
Moved by Keith?
Second.
Second by Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none? Uh, Sarah, would you read bill 2463 by title?
An ordinance of the city of Darting Prairie, Missouri, approving the third amended PUD final plan for a mixed use development commonly known as the Prairie Encore.
Any discussion or debate? Hear none? Entertain a motion for a roll call vote? Yeah. Uh, yes. And, and yeah, it probably ought to be in titles sometimes. As long as you make those titles. Okay, I, uh, I have a motion for a roll call vote by Keith. Second?
Mark.
Mark? Hey, Kim, would you call the roll?
Aye.
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 Their bill 2463 is ordinance two, B... A. Hey, staff communication, city attorney? City engineer? Twenty... Second? So the...
Oh.
Right. Alright.
Oh.
Timing is an issue here and so... Okay. Alright, next time. Alderman?
I wouldn't see if, um, ask Kathy, is there updated for the P and Z map? The updated map that we can look at? Everybody hear me right there?
Sorry, cannot get our microphone to turn on. I apologize. Um, it, so I, I have tasked Todd with updating our zoning map. Um, and I will, that goal.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
Um, I guess something else Kathy, I don't know if, if anything's been brought forward yet on the snow plowing or adding weeds or hits or anything on that?
No, at least the snow event did give us some thoughts and ideas on putting together the specifications for that. Um, and we have talked internally about the process and, um, timing sooner rather than later.
And how many...
Probably a little bit past the snow season.
Right, but how many miles of plowing is it? Do we have that?
I don't know that off the top of my head. Is it like...
I mean, like, if, if I went and was talking to a construction company or something and they asked me, how many miles of plowing are you looking at? But I'd like to have something to be able to tell them. I mean, do you have that? Oh, okay. Okay, yeah. Could you text me with that or whatever? Okay, well we...
That's, that's road miles, not lane miles. Lane miles is doubling. Yes, center line and...
Oh, so it's back and forth, yeah. So it's almost like double for them as far as...
Center lane.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Right. Um, the other thing I'd like to address Joel, um, I wasn't here for the stump because, because I was arguing that they should be doing Welden Springs Road from an audience just like you at the time they, they voted to do stump road. And I came in on the very beginning of the Encore when I took office here and, and I, I have to throw my, uh, my kudos to our attorney that he would have told me that we couldn't do it for some reason.
Well, I'd just like to say thanks for the board's support. Put it in as acting president. Take that. Also like to thank, I think I thank everybody for coming out tonight. Fading in, fading in local government. Voices make a difference, help us make decisions. Um, thanks to the St. Charles County Police Department for coming in.
Very good. Okay, uh, just like to say that I had a conversation with John Whedman, who's the, uh, CEO, I guess, of the college there. Vice president. Said that, uh, he has really, would like to just table this, put it and just let it go because, uh, they will now enforce the parking as far as like, uh, not allow people to park to use that. It, they will allow the cricket people to park on their days that they play cricket, but any other activities, especially since they're in the, the throes of building a new building in that area. So basically, uh, he said, let's just let it lie because didn't think, uh, he didn't think it would go anywhere, so. Um, that's about all I have. Hey, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a motion by Keith?
Second by...
Huh? I will, I will answer it after the meeting, like I have been. Okay. I, I do not have to, okay? So if you want to take me to task on that, take me to task. But I will, I've, I've offered to talk to you Joel multiple times after meetings, but... Yes, they do. Yes, they do. It's called the PUD process. You need to read the, you need to read all the ordinances and understand what a PUD process is, okay? So, I mean, if... If there was nothing put there, nothing, if there wasn't even a road there, water would run across your property. Oh my gosh, it's a creek. It's a creek. It's... All in favor of adjournment? Alright, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. You don't want to talk about it? We'll give you, we'll give you the reasoning behind what, it's, it's a PUD process. It's what this city has done. Tell it, water never ran in your new property. I've been listening. Was directed to their home, don't say nothing.
Get out, get out.
Yeah, I do. Yes, I do. Before there were sores, before there were sores, turn that water off. Set it up for the mayor, but I don't know if he can come back.
Oh, it's a... Uh, so we're... Afternoon.
Afternoon.
Okay. Okay. I didn't know that. I just found that.